I'd like to call a special meeting in Clear Lake City Council. Clear Lake City Council Chambers located 14050 Olympic Drive in the beautiful city of Clear Lake, California, 95424 to order this evening at 6:00 PM, 1800 hours. Roll call please.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Here.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Lustelow.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
President.
Mayor Kerdoff.
Here.
All right, we'll jump right to, well, first let's do our usual flags, shall we? Mr. Lustelow, would you lead us into the salute?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nomination under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no one, this is a special meeting for the indications, so we'll work with that. Move right into business. And, Mr. Olson, give your progress report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to give you the mid-year progress report tonight. It's kind of my opportunity to brag about what my staff has been doing for the last six months, so we'll get right to it for you. First of all, we're going to talk about what the city council priority goals were for the fiscal year end 2016. The priority goals were created as part of the budgeting process. The council created these goals in five different areas. Better find my glasses on now. Economic Development, Finance, Code Enforcement, Public Safety, and other priority projects. In all, there were 36 separate goals that were identified through this process. So, under Economic Development, the goals that were identified, and if you look at the bottom, all the items that are in red were either in process or completed. So, the Lake Shore Drive Plan Implementation, now going through the details coming up. Highway 53 Quarter Shopping Center, Complete General Plan Update, EIR, Begin Zoning Code and Design Guidelines and Zoning Map Update, Park Master Plans for Highlands, Austin, and Redbud Parks, Develop Impact Fees, Work to Establish Planning Economic Development Staff, Continue to Support Healthy City Programs and Projects. So, we'll take those kind of one at a time. Lake Shore Drive Plan Implementation, Developing the Visitor Center. This is something that is in process. I know it's been going very slowly. We've run into a couple of issues, but we're working with volunteer labor. We're hoping to get this going and hopefully have this. The plan is to have it completed by the end of this fiscal year possibly. Frontage Improvements to Highlands Park. We are in process with that. We have funding set aside, so we're working towards getting the design done. Include a Complete Streets Policy in the General Plan. So, these are all things that were identified in the Lake Shore Drive Plan, and so these are the things that we're doing here. As part of the General Plan process, we are including a Complete Streets Policy. It's set to direct city resources to code enforcement and blight remediation along the corridor. One of the things that's going to be coming to you very shortly is a proposal for something that we're at least tentatively calling a Beautification Corridor, where we will look at different travel corridors within the city and kind of put those at priorities for code enforcement. And Demo Austin Park Resort Property, that's something we had talked about a few weeks ago. We've issued the contract right now for testing for hazardous materials mitigation. And thanks to our Public Works Director, we've gotten something I thought was going to be impossible, which was authority to actually burn the property. So, that's going to save us quite a bit of money as far as demoing it. We're working with the Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, all those emergency personnel are going to be doing different trainings within that building before we actually take it down. And just in case you've forgotten what it looks like, that's a little picture. It's a little bit of an embarrassment, so I'm going to be very proud to have that thing out there.
I think we have a concept or something.
I think we do. The Highway 53 Quarter Shopping Center, just to give everyone kind of an update on that and what's going on. The background there is that that property was owned by redevelopment agency. With the dissolution of the whole redevelopment, there's now a process that has to be gone through. It's not a simple process. We've talked about this in a close session. We have a tentative purchase and sale agreement with the developer. We are taking that agreement in concept on the purchase and sale agreement has gone to the successor agency oversight board. They unanimously approved it. We now need to meet with the different taxing entity boards for agreements in concept with that purchase and sale agreement. We've got several of those scheduled right now. We will, once we complete meeting with all those taxing entity boards, then we will come back to you, the city council, in open session and ask you to approve that purchase and sale agreement. Once we've done that, they will go back to the taxing entities and ask all of those boards in open session to approve the purchase and sale agreement as well. Then we'll move on and hopefully get into the EIR and all those types of things with that shopping center. The General Plan Update in EIR, we've contracted, we have a contract with a consultant that's been executed, that's Gary Price Consultants, who, actually, that sounds rainy consultants, who's doing the EIR. We've had two planning commission workshops where we've completed reviewing the documents and the maps. We're currently on draft for the August 2016 city council or to have a public hearing. Another goal was to begin zoning code and design guidelines and zoning map update. We're waiting just a little bit longer until we have, are a little bit further along in the general plan to get started on the zoning code, but we should be getting started here probably either at the end of February or beginning of March. And it should be done in the fiscal year, next fiscal year 2017. Park Master Plan, and that's for the zoning code and the design guidelines. Park Master Plan for Highlands, we're going to be bringing that back to you in a couple of weeks for you to see the plan and hopefully to approve. We just accepted the contract for the Austin Park Master Plan, so that's in the beginning stages. Redbud Park, I'm holding off on that one until we get a better idea of the area of study. I think in the original concept for that, the idea was to take, to purchase a couple of properties. Until we identify whether we're actually going to be doing that or not, I don't want to get started on Redbud Master Plan and change it. So, my plan is to wait on that one unless you all have a different idea. Develop Impact Fees, that's something that we really can't do until we've completed the general plan because the general plan identifies the types of improvements that are needed, which we then would do an AD-1600 study and create development impact fees. So, we're anticipating that we'll be doing that at the end of this fiscal year. Work to Establish Planning and Economic Development Staff. We have hired as a consultant Gary Price Consulting. They've been brought on to assist us with planning for special items that are beyond our existing staff's capability. At present, the city manager is, has the economic development responsibility. It's just not in our budget to hire anyone to do anything like that, so that's delayed. Continue to Support Healthy City Programs and Projects, that was a goal. It's always been my intention to attend those meetings, however, they're held on Thursdays. Either preparing for a city council meeting or I'm helping to put out an agenda. So, it just hasn't worked for me to attend, so the Finance Director has actually a vast history in working in the medical field. He's, what, a regional director at Crystal Center Health? Would that be appropriate to say? So, he's got a lot of experience with, in the health field, so he's going to begin attending those meetings. So, Priority Goals for Finance. Continue Development of Budget Format, Continue Review of Brand Opportunities and Foundation Funding for Applications and Metalware Appropriate, Tenure Capital Improvement Program, Update Fee Schedule and Determine Cost Recovery Opportunities, and TOT Audit. So, to go on these in detail, Continue Development of the Budget Format. So, the budget's going to continue to improve, and staff is considering moving the budget online for greater transparency. There's a couple of different websites where we can actually upload our budget, where it's, the public is able to look at it, and it's very user-friendly. So, we're looking to see whether that's actually going to be worth the money for us to do. One of them used to be fairly inexpensive, but apparently they're incrementally increasing their costs, so we're looking to see whether we really get enough bang for our buck for it to justify us with the size of our city.
Is there not a reason why we didn't put it on our website?
Oh, we did put the budget on the website, but this is actually something where it's interactive, and ours is a PDF, which is not interactive. So, there's something that if you wanted to look at, it's called bookinggov.com if you'd like to look. Continue Review of Grant Opportunities and Foundation Funding for Applications and Metalware Appropriate. We've hired a consultant to assist us in CDVG administration, and in fact, we just had a meeting with her yesterday where she was helping us to look at other potential grant funds for different projects. Tenure Capital Improvement Program, that's another one of those where until we have the general plan done, it's not really possible for us to put together the tenure VIP, so that's something we'll be working for in the next fiscal year. Oh, and I, I have this. Update the Fee Schedule and Determine Cost Recovery Opportunities, that's currently in process. We're hoping to have that, we've just got an update this morning, I didn't update the slide, but we're looking at probably March 30th to have that completed. The TOT Audit, we've currently got that one on hold until we can justify the expense. We're, it's going to be several thousand dollars for us to do that, so we're kind of at this point determining whether the, we're going to get the bang for our buck out of that as well. So, we're looking at that. We don't want to spend any needless money, so we think we're going to get some kind of return on it. So, Priority Goals for Code Enforcement. The priority goals under that topic were Health and Safety, Abandoned Vehicles, Animal Control, Weed Abatement, Refuse Collection, Park Signage, Business and Residential Address Visibility. Health and Safety, Code Enforcement Efforts Have Begun, they're focused on marijuana and health and safety issues. We, Abandoned Vehicles, we have a very small amount budgeted for significant problems. There's a couple of them that we're working on right now. We are waiting for authorization from the county to proceed using ADA funding. We've got a little bit of conflicting information from the county whether we can or can't use it, so they're looking into it right now, and hopefully we'll get some good news there. Animal Control, we made improvements to the interim facility. We have hired some additional staffing, well, I shouldn't say we've hired, we've hired one part-time additional staff person, and then we, hopefully, will be starting a new person soon that we're getting through grant lines. We're also, as you know, in the process of negotiating for property to build a new facility. Weed Abatement. We worked with the Fire District to send out a date notice last July, and we're going to do so again this year. Refuse Collection, we're working with Clear Lake Waste Solutions to write the Universal Garbage Collection Ordinance to the council this spring, hopefully as soon as possible. Park Signage, the signs are being designed right now, and we will be putting those up in the spring. Business and Residential Address Visibility, the ordinance is being prepared for council consideration this fiscal year, so that should be coming soon. Public Safety, under that topic, we have Emergency Preparedness Plan Update, Law Enforcement Enhancement, Phone System, Citation Authority and Administrative Penalties, and Road Maintenance. Emergency Preparedness Plan Update, we currently are working on that. We're working with Chief Willie Cepeda, he's going to be coming in in the next few weeks to help us get that completed. Law Enforcement Enhancement, we are near, and let me just make sure my terminology is correct here, fully budgeted staffing level, is that good?
Thank you.
Pers sworn only, he's very sensitive about that. Let's see, Community Policing has been enacted. We have a dedicated traffic officer appointed, and for, just, I've already let the council know, but for anyone watching at home, there is a traffic officer out there, so please keep your speed downs and obey the traffic laws. We have a homeless liaison appointed, a marijuana specialist has also been appointed. Phone System, this is something that our Finance Director will be talking with you a little bit later on as a mid-year budget item, but we'll be addressing this with, hopefully, with a new dispatch console upgrade. Citation Authority and Administrative Penalties, that's in process and should come to council before the end of the fiscal year. Road Maintenance, this is just kind of a snippet of all the things that have been going on with Public Works. You may have noticed the folks had the road closed and traffic diverted just, what was that, a month or so ago? Where they replaced 60 feet of drain pipe in Lake Shore Drive. They also replaced 60 feet of drain pipe in Meadowbrook Road. They replaced a collapsing culvert in Oguland Canyon Road. They fixed numerous other culverts. And they patched thousands of potholes with 93 tons of patch. I don't have an exact number of potholes for you, but it's pretty sound.
Next year you left a count.
I just want to point out, the ones right up there that you notice in the green, yeah, that is not Public Works employee.
Which one, he doesn't have his safety helmet on. All of our employees have our safety helmet on.
Thank you.
Other priority projects that were identified by the council was a Municipal Code Update or Rewrite, a Chamber Sound System, a Shopping Car Ordinance, a Non-Camping Ordinance in Non-Designated Areas, Dog Park Ordinance, and Reevaluate Dogs in Park Ordinance, Personnel Rules. Strategic Plan, Senior Center Unfinished Projects, Maintenance Districts, Senior Center Operating Costs, Discussion on Treasurer and City Clerk Elected or Appointed. So, to go on those in detail, Municipal Code Update or Rewrite, we do have the Municipal Code now online. Updating the entire Municipal Code is quite the task, so we'll be working on that probably for a big part of, well, maybe even beyond next fiscal year. That's a, quite an undertaking to go through everything. The Chamber Sound System, I'm hoping everybody can hear because it has been replaced and upgraded and sounds much better. We're also looking at potentially a video system update that would be very inexpensive. We have someone who's given us a proposal that looks to be very cool. Well, not only will we have that where the council can see, but we'll be taking this painting down and having that be a projector mounted right here that would shoot up there so that the people in the audience can see it in a larger view and don't have to bring their binoculars when they're sitting in the back row. Shopping Center Car Ordinance, that was approved and went into effect as of January 9th. We have distributed the, one of the things that's required from them is to have a Shopping Car Retrieval Plan in place. That's been distributed. We've received most of them back so far. So, for those who haven't received by next week, we'll follow up with and get that in place. Non-Camping Ordinance in Non-Designated Areas. That is anticipated to come in, I actually have it slated on the next council meeting. The Dog Park Ordinance and Reevaluate Dog in Park Ordinance. The Dog in Park Ordinance was reevaluated in December. We are currently actively looking and will look as part of the Austin Park Master Plan process to see about permanent dog park. Personnel Rules, that is in process. We've got someone who's working on that, and that should be completed by the end of this fiscal year, and that is grant funded through Barcept to get that completed. Strategic Plan, that's another one of those things that's a large item to chew on, and due to the complexity and time constraints, we're going to be probably working on that more in fiscal year 2017. Senior Center Unfinished Projects. Now, I haven't met with Senior Center Director to discuss certain issues out there. Probably I need a little more direction from council as to specifically what it is, what has to be completed out there, but we do have some things that have been discussed with the Director as to things to be improved out there. Maintenance Districts, we will have a policy requirement in the new general plan to implement maintenance districts. For, if you don't, for those people who aren't familiar with what a maintenance district is, that would be something like, if you put in development, then you'd be required to maintain the landscaping, maintain the lighting, and pay for those types of things. So, it wouldn't be on the city to have to do those. Senior Center Operating Costs, this is kind of, I'd love this in with the entire city. We're looking, we're working with a solar power company on estimating what the costs and savings would be for all city buildings. Discussion on Treasurer and City Clerk Elected or Appointed, that's a discussion that we're planning to have. We're tentatively looking at February 25th to have that discussion. It's something that needs to be done early on this fiscal year because if there is a decision to make change, that then needs to get onto the ballot this year to implement that. Other Significant Achievements, that are not part of the goals. So, Citywide, as you know, the city of Clear Lake made it through the most devastating fire season in Lake County history with no direct impact on the city. The Police Department and Public Works were instrumental in assisting Cal Fire, Lake County Fire District, Lake County Sheriff's Office, and Lake County Public Works. We've already applauded the folks, but I just have to say again, our folks went just above and beyond in assisting not only with the Rocky Fire, but in the Valley Fire. PD without risking their lives trying to save and evacuate people. Doug without working 24 hours a day in the ruderas, and just, our entire staff was helpful in one way or another in these fires. New Ordinance Has Been Passed, I already talked about Shopping Car Ordinance. We also passed Responsible Dog Ownership Ordinance, a Wireless Power Ordinance, Conduct in Public Parks and Beaches Ordinance. We have a pending ordinance on Medical Marijuana Cultivation, which is coming back hopefully for the final time next week. The city, hopefully you all have noticed this, but the city council agenda and staff reports are consistently posted on the city website and distributed to the council the Thursday and Friday preceding the council meeting so that you all have the entire weekend in order to be able to review all the information. We've implemented paperless agenda distribution via iPad. We've installed this projector screen that we're looking at now in the council chambers and increased the number of PowerPoint presentations. We've updated the council norms and procedures policy. We've expanded the employee safety and training program. We identified, under that, we've identified and corrected a very serious exiting issue, and I think I've talked to the all, you know, I jokingly call it a hallway of death. It was a significant exiting problem that we corrected. We've reduced the rental rates at the senior center, implemented the Smart Gov software update, presented the mid-year budget review that you'll be hearing shortly, one month earlier than last year. Last week, we presented the financial audit two months earlier than last year. We have done, in just so far this year, three first-time home fire loans for $40,000 each, and one rehab loan for $5,187. You, hopefully you saw this or not, but we did do an advertisement in the San Francisco Chronicle in the Lake County Insert in the ball in November.
That's not a picture of the ad.
That's not, no. Thank you for pointing that out.
But I may add that it was better than the previous ad.
Yes, and I actually talked to Tony this morning from the county who's going to work with us on helping to come up with an even better one, a spring edition. We've prepared additional staffing through grant sources. That's what this picture is about. These are drop workers who are out there working on replacing some line. We also are hopefully bringing on someone from experienced works, and we've used the Mendo Lake Alternative Services Program to bring some volunteer labor. Code Enforcements, some new open cases are, we had 1,191 new open cases. Oh, and just so you know, on the right, we've had some staff members who wondered if that's a Christmas tree farm. It is not. That is a marijuana field demediate. Closed Cases, we had 718. We invoiced for administrative penalties $105,000. We've done property assessments for $87,500. Total marijuana plants that were abated were 3,973. And if you look real closely, that is the Silks Building. They were doing an illegal demolition of the parking lot. We put a stop order on that and then required them to abate what they had done. And if you look to the left, that mountain black is asphalt that you can't really see. I apologize, it looks better on my computer than it does there. We also did an abatement of the 36th Avenue Illegal Dump Site. That was code enforcement, Public Works, along with CC4C, which is Citizens Carrying for Clear Lake. We worked with Canopan Unified School District on mapping the avenues project, and we demoed the former chamber building on Gulf Avenue. Police Department, as I'm sure you're all aware, the Clear Lake Police Department is a very busy department. These staffs are for the entire year, but they, for the 2015 calendar year, they had 21,508 incidents, 3,543 reports, 2,288 traffic enforcement stops, 1,989 arrests, and 1,311 citations. Keep in mind, they handled all of that while starting the year short-staffed in sworn personnel and extremely short-staffed in dispatch throughout the year. Police Department has also hired six new officers, including two from Calistoga Police Department, which is very happy about because typically, police officers are going the other direction. They're going from our police department to other police departments, and in this case, we had two of them come to our police department, so we're very happy about that. We've also implemented community policing program, purchased two new patrol cars, implemented the use of body cameras. One officer was involved in a shooting that saved the life of a civilian. Personnel, PD personnel completed 765 hours of training. Police Department has received grants for one COGS grant for one officer, one school resource officer that was funded by Canopan Unified. We received grants to expand the evidence room, to get in, to install an on-duty emergency personnel door, to purchase a prisoner transport van. We received grants and donations for the CANON program and training through community fundraising, and the Body Armor Replacement Grant. Some other significant, oops, I got these kind of mixed up, but some other significant achievements with Public Works were they installed the holiday banners in Austin Park thanks to Councilmember Sabatier's solicit donations for all of that. And we are nearly complete with a citywide drainage survey. We've received $160,645, $160,645 in remediation grants from Cal Recycle. That will be used to demo various red tape properties. We've received $5,000 also from Cal Recycle as a grant to purchase trash pickers, bags, safety vests. Last year, in the previous year when we received that, the garbage can itself was purchased with that. We received APC, which is Area Planning Council grant, to hire a telephone survey consultant. And also through APC, we've been reimbursed $7,000 for the efforts of our city engineer. So, some priorities for the second half of fiscal year 2016. My concept here is to, we're going to go back to basics. My, and I think I talked with you all about this in my interview for this position, is I think that people want to live and have businesses in places that are clean, safe, and well-managed. And Clear Lake's in the past has had challenges in those areas, so I would like to focus on us becoming known as being clean, safe, and well-managed city. Under Clean, we'll institute policies and programs that visibly reduce blight in the city, such as the Universal Garbage Ordinance, focusing on code enforcement with beautification corridors, proactive focused enforcement, and weed abatement. We're going to be demoing a bunch of properties that have been sitting vacant and blinded throughout the city, and then I'll be bringing forward for your consideration a rental inspection ordinance as well. Safe, the city of Clear Lake will institute policies and programs that statistically reduce violent crime in the city, such as the Marijuana Cultivation Ordinance. We're going to have a joint, assuming that that is passed, we'll have a joint code enforcement and PD partnership in doing that. We're going to have, as we've already instituted, community-oriented policing. We are at full staffing level. A offer has gone out for a, our final police officer, and assuming they complete the backgrounds, we'll be at full staffing. we'll be at full staffing. We're having greater traffic enforcement. We're upgrading, assuming you approve this, we'll be upgrading our dispatch communication system and we've got increased special enforcement through AD109 grant funding. Well managed. The city of Clear Lake will institute policies and programs that will improve the image of the city, strengthen its finances, and demonstrate an understanding of modern governance. Part of how we'll do that is by improving our customer service with enhanced training. We're going to have the CTA folks come in, the certified training ambassador program come in here and do a training here for city employees as part of that. We also have online trainings that we've instituted. We're going to work to develop new revenues. One of the things that we'll be coming to you very shortly with is a new franchise agreement. Cultivation permits, assuming again that that is approved, we should be generating new revenues through that process. Once we put in the development impact fees, we'll be generating revenues for that. Same with the updated fee schedule and working to identify more grants. Improve facilities. We're going to improve roads. We are going to be building an animal control facility. We're going, plan to do the phase one of the Highlands Park. Most of these are all pending your approval, but just show you the types of things that we're looking to do. Phase one of Highlands Park. We're going to focus a lot more on maintaining city properties since we are going out telling others they have to improve their properties. It's hypocritical for us not to maintain our own properties, so we're going to spend more time focusing on that. We're going to finish the chamber building and we're going to make improvements in City Hall. We, as you, I'm sure you noticed as you come into the doors for City Hall, that doesn't, they don't close properly, it's just a whole mess. We're looking to fix that now. The lobby area is in disrepair, we're looking to fix that. We want to do some minimal improvements here into the chamber, kind of paint it up, make it look a little bit nicer, reorganize it a little bit. So those types of upgrades. Improve programs and processes. We're going to finish the general plan. We're going to update the zoning code. We're going to create design guidelines. We're going to improve citizen communication and transparency. One of the things for your consideration on the mid-year budget adjustment tonight is the use of the NEXL system. I was, I'd never seen this system before until the fires and I thought that it worked tremendously. And PD agrees and assuming you agree as well, that we're going to be implementing that system. Again, looking at putting the budget online, having a greater use of the website and Facebook, posting information and creating a city newsletter are the things that we hope to do to, again, improve citizen communication and transparency. And then goal setting. That's a meeting that you typically have before you do your budget. We plan the same thing in the spring, probably in May. As part of the budgeting process, the city council will create priority goals for the upcoming fiscal year. However, this year, rather than setting specific micro-level tasks as goals, I'm going to request that we look at creating more macro-level goals such as those that, you know, I've just discussed with you. So keep that kind of in your thinking as to what types of macro-level goals we could be, putting a vision for the city to achieve in this next fiscal year. And that concludes my report on some of the first discussion.
Thank you, sir. Any comments? I don't see anyone from the public would like to address senior board's report. See two thumbs up in the back. Great job. All right. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Anything else you really come up with for that question? Just, I want to move on. Go ahead, Mr. Paulson.
If I could just say, you know, my staff has done a tremendous job. All of those are because of the policies that you all set forth, but my staff really implemented all of those and I think they deserve, you know, a lot of applause for the great work that they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Our public works guys have been fabulous. I mean, I've had to work with them lately and they're really working hard to get all these things done and I was wanting to take the back road over here and they built at least 30 tunnels over there just the other day. So, you know, I know that they're hard at work and it's nice to see they have enough staff at this point to at least get something done. I know we've got a little shorthanded there also. It's kind of nice to see that the city actually is starting to have a little better staffing so that we can get some of this stuff through the bar and so, you know, I think we're going definitely in the right direction.
I appreciate the snapshot of our accomplishments over the past year. I think that helps me and everyone else to focus on things that we are accomplishing and it also gives a little motivation or a little shot in the arm to continue to make changes on those things we noticed that we'd like to see looking better, be more improved. So I think we're definitely headed in a good trajectory. Again, I want to reiterate to the staff of this organization, Holy Cap, the things that you're capable of accomplishing with the minimal amount of resources that we have to allocate to you, it's amazing and I'm in awe of all of you.
I agree.
Thank you. My plan is to do this twice a year, once in the mid-year budget and then once through the end of the fiscal year so that you can kind of, you can actually see what's been accomplished. You know, we come here and we tell you things have one issue at a time and then you don't necessarily see what all is being accomplished, so that's kind of the rationale for doing this presentation for you.
I can formally break it back to council, but I will now, Councilmember Salafi.
I just want to say, the majority of the complaints that I used to hear was, the answer is no. And what you showed us and what we've been experiencing over the last six months and year is we're doing a lot more with the same amount of resources that we originally are given. You're finding us better grants, you're finding us new employees that we're not even paying for. I just want to say thank you for pushing and pushing and getting us what we need to make us to move forward, so thank you very much. Very appreciated.
I concur. Anyone else? I like the idea of looking at a macro concept for a project rather than a micro, looking at individual tasks that we might need to complete. I'm excited to see what you have to bring, but just for discussion or rather than discussion, maybe set an example. If we can begin working on our streets and improving streets and maybe paving streets with some of the, with the direction that our public works director is taking us and looking at the different avenues that we may have coming forward, say in the next election year. That in conjunction with your report or plan for Clear Lake, Onlook Shore and Olympic Drive, looking at possibility of sidewalks, bald outs for better parking, better visibility for folks coming to visit our city as well as our residents. I'd like to thank the chief for, or lieutenant for some of the projects he started, particularly our traffic officer. Thank you very much. But what can we do to expand on those? So I've kind of tasked all of you to come back when we have that meeting, looking at a bigger vision, not just specific work or single tasks. And I did see a gentleman stampeding to the mic like I heard a turtles.
No, the public comment was closed. Sorry, you cannot talk.
I'll open it back up if public comment.
I, I just didn't think it was fair of him to just give you two thumbs up. It's so much more than that. I tell you what, it's you guys up there is where it all starts and you have all worked together so well this year, it's great to see. And thanks to you five for being able to help direct staff in the direction you wanted to go. And, you know, looking all the way across of all these folks you have sitting here, everybody's done a great job this year. And, but thanks to you five for working together and setting the goals and priorities because that's what the council's to do. And you guys have done a great job and it really shows. And thanks for your leadership, Greg, and how you put it all together and able to follow through and all your staff, you know, they've all worked really hard and it couldn't have been done without all of you working together and all your staff. So thanks for what you guys are doing. Let's keep up the good work.
Thanks, sir.
We have one more stampeding to the mic.
I didn't get everybody's place. Tough London City of Clear Lake, I know this is hard to believe, but I'm actually going to agree with Jeff.
Somebody write that down on the calendar.
I just hope that's not the only time.
Twice this year. We're keeping track.
Must be getting older.
Thank you both, I appreciate that. All right, back to council. We have nothing, but I do, no, we have no actions to take, but again, I'd like to thank you. And again, thanks to the staff and just to reiterate something you said, we've seen, we've seen staff out beyond their work hours on projects. You know, it wasn't much more than a year ago when we had some significant flooding within the city and everybody turned out, volunteers, businesses, to help remedy the situation. We had blocked culverts, we had a lot of trees and debris in the, in our drainages that were impacting businesses and residents as everybody came out and with their help, remedied some of that problem. This year, we haven't had any of those impacts that we've seen so far with the rains we've had. Granted, they've been slow and steady, not the huge deluge that we had back then, but once the rain has stopped, again, those drainages are lowering and everything's working as it should. So thanks again to the public works director and his staff. Code enforcement overwhelming job in July when they hit the ground running with a whole lot of abatement to do and some of marijuana issues that have created a huge impact on our police department with homicides and other violent crimes. And I want to thank the police department for that again. Both of you working together has been fantastic and then being able to come together and quickly create animal control, you know, within our city, saving a lot of our staff time and driving to what was the SPCA shelter or even longer if we had had to go to the county. But our turnaround time is minutes instead of hours and we can get it right back out on the street where it should be. So again, I concur, we're going the right way and I hope we can continue that in 2016. So thanks again.
I know a couple words really fast.
You didn't have your time.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
But we're, we're hearing from higher up, we're hearing from county supervisors and we're hearing from former council and staff on a good job that we're doing as council members sitting up here helping direct the staff and we're saying thank you to the staff. But I'd also like to say thank you to the community because like what you just said, Russ, last year at this time, all the people that pulled together, there was everything from business owners to public works, to fire department to, I mean, just people walking by asking, how can I help when we were over here? And it's the citizens, the CC4C. It's people like that that come out every single day and that's what encourages me to sit up here and be able to make the decisions that we make with the courage knowing we have the people behind us like that. So I just want to say thank you. It takes everyone from the citizen level all the way up to these chairs to make the decisions that we make.
Our troubles are really easy. I think one of the things we saw in, seriously, in the three fires that we had, our community really pulled together to help not just those impacted by the Rocky Fire, but to get donations and help at the senior center and to help some of the other evacuation locations. A lot of those folks came from Clear Lake. You mentioned public works director working 24 hours protecting and providing security within the riverous, obviously well without jurisdiction of Clear Lake, but that's where he was assigned, you know, for Mr. Lambert and all the others that pulled together. This has been a pretty trying year between floods and fire. Knocking wood, no volcanoes, earthquake. We're still moving forward and it's that, it's that heart that I think comes from being a small town, small city and I'm hoping that we can continue that momentum as we clean up, look at our own properties, look at our, helping our neighbors to clean up their properties as we gear up for the summer season and hopefully it will be a much busier tourist and visitors coming to our town. So again, thank you for bringing that up. And I'd like to point out, Councilmember Overton, for all the work she did during the fires, staying up hours and hours and hours at the, at the senior center and providing meals and shelter. So everybody, kudos. All right. Item two. Mid-year fiscal budget review, we're sitting on, into our seats, sir.
I'm, oh, you got it.
So. Right. We had very loud water.
But at least it's not.
Here, be careful, Russ, this time.
Okay, guys, party's over.
Thank you, Mr. Rick. We're ready to go.
I think we're ready to go. Okay. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. This is your fiscal, middle fiscal year, maybe like it, okay. Your budget, your fiscal year and 2016 mid-year budget review. Keep in mind that your budget policy requires in February that the city manager, who's my manager's director, presents you with a review of where we, where we are in the budget and how we expect to end up the end of the fiscal year. I want to remind you that there is an allocation of responsibility in the budget. Certain things require city council action, certain things require city manager action. Generally, the city council has to appropriate reserves, accept replacement reserves and keep that in mind because we'll be talking about reserves later in this presentation. Interfund loans, remember earlier this year you delegated the responsibility for making income loans between the funds during the current year and appropriations of any unassigned revenues. The city manager can deal with transfers within a fund or department, appropriation of replacement reserves, appropriation of unbudgeted assigned revenues. Okay? So that's generally the way the responsibilities is split up between the two departments. Now, with regard to the budget, I'd like to remind you that 72% of the budget, and that's not including capital projects, is spent on personnel. So a lot of the way that you accomplish your goals is through the proper application of the work that the personnel do in the city. And those personnel positions should reflect the goals of the city. I would also like to remind you that the staffing is, is extremely tight and at or very near capacity. So I say that because the tendency is to assume that there is an unlimited amount of ability of staff to do things and there isn't. So, so when you're making decisions and evaluating priorities, you always have to keep in mind that there are only so many people there to do the work as long as we have a restriction on our level of budget. Also keep in mind that many of the employees do many functions within the city. And a perfect example of that is our grants technician, Adeline Brown. She not only handles the grants, she handles the front counter, she does work for the city engineer and public works. She is pulled in a lot of different directions and you really don't realize it until you look at her timesheet and you look at how many areas that she's allocated out to, but it's important to realize that when you start splitting people out into different areas, you can allow inefficiencies to creep into the system. So the last point I want to make about this is your ability to achieve your identified priority goals is very much dependent upon the identified staff who can handle it. So I just wanted to give you a list of So, I just wanted to give you a list of the staffing levels and I apologize that they're small to read, but I did make copies in the back for you to look at. In the budget, we, and I'm modifying this slightly, in the budget, we basically allocated just about 50 employees. And in the budget, it says 55, but that includes the council. So, what I did was I broke them down into the particular departments that they're in. And you'll notice that the police department, it's the largest department of the city, is allocated 30.5 positions. Now, of that, 22 and a half are sworn officers, you have five dispatch and three non-sworn. You just heard that they are in the process of hiring one additional officer because they were down one. And keep in mind, you saw the number of calls that the officers are handling. When you're down even one officer, that means that 21,000 calls is allocated not among 22 officers, but among 21 officers. And that does significantly increase the workload. But the most important thing that you should notice there is in the dispatch area, we were budgeted for five and we only have two. Now, we was talking to Lieutenant Sully and it looks like we may have another dispatch person coming on board. But keep in mind, dispatch is the link between the officers and the public. So, when you're down in the dispatch area, that communication link becomes a little more tenuous. So, we always need to kind of keep in mind the struggle that we have. It also, when you have less staff than your budget, it can also indicate other issues that may be needed in terms of maybe looking at salary schedules and things like that to deal with the problem or some other issues. So, I just want to just kind of point that out to you. You'll notice in code enforcement, we have.
Can I just jump back to the police?
Sure.
I also want to point out for anybody watching and I'm sure everyone up here knows, that's a 24/7, 365 operation, it's not 8 to 5. And those are critical staffing issues that need to be addressed. And some of those police officers, I'm sure, are being scheduled in dispatch to cover the vacancies for holidays and illnesses.
Oh, exactly.
So, there's big impacts.
Yeah, when you have two dispatchers to cover a 24/7 operation, 365 days a year, I mean, obviously someone can't work that much. And so, they have had to supplement that dispatch with sworn officers. And we did a calculation, actually did a calculation to try and figure out what the additional cost of that is and it was up around $72,000 a year if the problem doesn't get straightened out. So, you know, those are significant numbers to be looking at. In code enforcement, we have four allocated, that was the code enforcement supervisor, you had two code enforcement officers and the code enforcement technician. And we were down one code enforcement officer, there's, they're looking at hiring another one. Keep in mind, code enforcement is a high priority in the city in trying to change the people's behavior to make sure that this is a much cleaner city. And when we're down code enforcement officers, there's less people out there to do that. The one other change I wanted to point out, public works is fully staffed and I'll talk about that in a minute. And then administration notice, we didn't have an engineer. What would be asked, we have this evening, is to bring out a full-time engineer. We've been contracting out. That does create some inefficiencies in the system. So, we're looking at bringing an additional engineer in. So, when you look at the amount of work that was done and you think about the presentation you just heard, that ain't many people to do all of that work. Okay. The other thing I want to point out is the employees that I listed did not include the short-term state drought relief workers. And I got to tell you, they've been a big help this year. We started out with seven workers in public works, we were down to five for a couple of issues, and we have two within the administration of the city. Fortunately, we haven't had to pay for them because the state is paying for them, but they are making a significant impact in the workload in the city. The only thing I can say about that is that ends in May. So, that additional work that's being done, while we very much appreciate it, keep in mind it isn't going to be there all year long.
May I ask a follow-up question on this? It's not allowed for us to try and renew the program, it's over in May, or is it that we go back into the pool of qualifying for those workers again?
I'm going to have to defer to our city manager, will he actually create a contract?
At this point, it's over in May. So, we were allowed a six-month allocation. They haven't led me to believe that there's an additional one.
It would be wonderful if we could get that in 2016 months. Okay, just kind of leaving the whole personnel issue and capacity issue in order to do things, I just want to kind of give you a basic look at the cash flow for the city. Remember earlier in the year, I gave you a presentation in terms of the actual cash flow of the city where our expenses for the most part go out over, evenly out over the year, but our revenues don't necessarily come in that way. You will notice, and I have a 2000 fiscal year and 2015 and a fiscal year and 2016 comparison there, just wanted to let you know, between '15 and '16, the budget was 31,000, projected to be 51,000 to the better. We had a negative of 27,000 budgeted in '15. We budgeted a positive net revenues over expenses of 24,000, so that turned out to a flip of 51,000. Today, we're pretty much on target. You will notice that our total revenues, let me get my pointer here. Our total revenues are up higher about 51,000, but our expenses are up about 48,000. So, on balance, while we have taken in more money, we've spent more money, but we're still to the positive of about 2,900. And keep in mind, these numbers are through December 31st and not January 1st. Last year, we made this presentation, the presentation was made in March, you have numbers through the end of January. Okay, so, let's start talking about specifics in terms of revenues and expenses. We had some unbudgeted and received revenues, our workers' compensation reimbursement was about 88,000. We had a liability insurance reimbursement of about 6,000. So, we had $95,009 to the good in terms of revenues that were unbudgeted and have actually been received. In terms of the revenue watch, and keep in mind, when I do the budget presentation, if I don't talk about a specific category, assume that it's going to be fairly close to what the budget actually is. So, rather than talk to you about what's going to be there and isn't back in the budget, I have talked to you about the exceptions and only significant exceptions. So, we have a list of categories, refunds to the city, I budgeted about 15,500. What that number basically was, was last year, we received a lot of reimbursement for mandated state costs that the governor figured he had some extra money, so he started to pass some of that out. He's being a little less generous this year, so that's, I'm assuming we're not going to get that 15,500, although I was just looking at the revenues today and there has been a little bit coming in. Vehicle release fees look like they're going to be up about 5,000. Transit occupancy tax, it's up 42% the first half of the year. Right now, our transit occupancy tax exceeds the entire budget for the year by about 6,000. That's all I'm going to assume that's coming in. It may continue on, but I'm not going to count on it. So, if that rate continues, wonderful, it'll go right to our bottom line at the end of the year. If it stops right now, we're just back down to a regular increase than the 75,000, it's actually 74,000 and something, we're going to be very, very close to that number. Building permit fees are up $10,000. I think that that's probably inherently believable because you're starting to see a lot more construction in Clearlake. And then senior center rental fees are up. I put 3,000 in there. My gut says I think it's going to be a little bit more, but we haven't been able to get the full effect of the decrease in the fees. All of that gets out to about an additional 77,000. Okay. Well, so, let's look at the other side, the spending side. Okay. And there are really five areas that I want to look at in terms of 2016 budget. One is animal control, community development, legal fees, engineering, and the PD NICS service. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each of these individually. So, let's talk about animal control. The way to start set up is I start out with what the adopted budget was at the beginning of the year and basically go through what's going to increase the expenses and then reduce it by some of the savings we had. And you'll remember earlier in the year that the SPCA terminated contracts, so we don't have to make those payments, so that's going to be about a $15,000 savings. In our effort to stand up the animal control services, we had to incur some short-term costs while we develop a long-term solution to animal control. So, we had, we spent about $10,000 making some modifications out to the public works yard to be able to handle the animals. We bought new kennels, which we were going to have to buy for the new facility anyway, and that was about 13,000, that came out of bond funds. What we have done is we have hired a temporary kennel tech. This was, what we wanted is we've got a temporary kennel tech. One of the issues that we were running into, since we didn't have the SPC and SPCA anymore, Jenna, the animal control officer, was doing it all. Well, one person just simply can't do it all. So, we hired someone to be able to go out at least on the weekends and during the days to help out at the public works yard to care for the animals because you just can't ask them to do everything. And what we're doing is we're looking at a full-time office assistant. The problem, the problem that we have right now is Jenna is now doing what the SPCA used to do, which was handling the licensing, the adoptions out, all the certificating and all of that. And it really is not an effective use of her time. So, what we are suggesting is, if we're going to stand up an animal control service, we're going to have to do this anyway, we ought to have a full-time office assistant to be able to handle that paperwork so we can have our animal control officer out on the streets doing what the animal control officer should be doing. And we estimate that's going to be almost $20,000 for the last six months. So, that net change is the $34,000 and you'll notice that that's consistent, excuse me, that's consistent with the 34,268 that we have there. I want to make caveat though. These are temporary costs. We've done some estimates and as we stand up animal control, the cost of the city is probably going to be significantly higher and we're going to have to look at that in terms of the long run kind of cost. So, just kind of preparing you for the fiscal year end 2017 budget. All right. The next item was community development. We started out the year with a $75,000 budget for that. Earlier in the year, you approved a contract with Gary Price to give planning assistance, planning assistance to our assistant planner, Joy, because she simply can't do it all herself. And then we have the general plan update, which is a fairly critical process because from that, as the city manager indicated, we're going to have to, that's going to be the basis for doing our capital improvement program and doing our developer fees in the future. We kind of, you know, we have to, with the general plan, that's going to tell us what we expect our population to be, what the growth is going to be, what the estimated increase in business is going to be. And based on that, we will be able to estimate what sort of capital and infrastructure needs we're going to be for the city and that forms the basis of the capital improvement budget. All right. So, the two of those were a total of 102,000. So, the community development department budget would then at the end of the year be 177,000 rather than 75,000. The next item is city attorney legal fees. I'm being an attorney myself, I know how you all hate attorney fees, but they're a reality. Earlier in the year, you had, you started out with 79,200, which is the retainer contract with Jones and Mayer. There was an adjustment done earlier in the year for about $9,000. We put in, or I put in two reserve items. The smaller one is for litigation costs. There are some potential litigation costs out there which we think we may need, but we're not sure about it. By experience, it's significant enough that I think we need to put that in there. The litigation reserve, which is not with Jones and Mayer, Ryan wanted me to say that for you, not Jones and Mayer. This is for one of the cases that you talked about in closed session quite a bit. We don't know whether those funds will be spent this year, if at all. One of the things about litigation is it will proceed at its pace depending on whether the attorneys want to push it or not push it. So, I reserved it this year just because I don't know whether it's going to be spent or not. And I don't want to get to the end of the year and the plaintiff on the other side having pushed it and then have a $59,000 attorney bill and no authority to pay it. So, I just want to, I put that in there, but I'm not real strong on that one. I'm just letting you know that I'm putting it there, we got it covered in case it happens, but I'm kind of not expecting it to happen. So, that net adjustment was about 83,000. Engineering. All right. So, the adopted budget was 65,000. We had a contract with Unitens for engineering services and what we want to do is switch it over to a full-time combination city engineer superintendent. Now, the idea here is the city engineer, as we begin to do a lot more development, the city engineer is going to be very critical in terms of establishing what's needed for a lot of the development. So, having someone on board who is experienced and has a lot of ability, I think is a very good thing. The cost at the end of the year would be about $51,000 for that. Keep in mind that next year's budget, the city engineer, our expectation is it'll be 75% city engineer and then the other 25% will be split between public works and roads because that's probably where most of the time is going to be. So, that net adjustment is about $39,000. All right. The police department NICS system. Probably most of us during the Valley fires and the Jerusalem and the Rocky fires got notices on the NICS system. Whether we like to recognize it or not, Clearlake has a fairly significant crime rate. But really, no. but really no comprehensive way to notify citizens of critical issues regarding public safety. The NICS system, you can set it up one of two ways. You can set it up on a per-usage or you can set it up on an unlimited usage. I think initially, and the cost isn't significantly different. The unlimited usage is like $6,500 setup, and then it's like $5,000 a year after that. Most all of the entities around here, Sheriff's Department, Lakeport, I think the Fire Service uses NICS. The school district doesn't use NICS, but they have an all-call system. And I think it's, I think it's appropriate for the city of Clear Lake at this point to engage in NICS system just to make sure that we can communicate with the people critical information at critical times and not wait for it to come out in the paper, not that it's anything for waiting, probably waiting in the papers. But the sooner you get the communication about it.
Can I ask?
You said, make it.
So how does that system work as far as like, how do you get the phone numbers and stuff like that to be able to have that work? Do you have to go and sign up on that?
They, there's two ways to do it. They can sign up for the cell phone services and things like that. But with this unlimited system, it's also goes through the reverse 911 system, and that's the overall cost. And that's what we recommend is that we get that service as well.
And then somebody else, like I could go sign up now that I can do that?
Certainly on your cell.
Just a follow-up, Chris. The Sheriff's Office, Police Department, PD, and Fire Service are using NICS through Signal Dispatch, is that correct? Or do they all have any of them?
Mr. Mayor, the Lakeport Police Department has a standalone system now, which is fairly new, and the Fire Department does pay you back with OES through the Sheriff's Department as well. And they have a, I believe they use NICS, but they also use a program called City Watch as well.
Right. Okay. All right. So those, that's a summary of the five particular parts. Now, the next thing that I want to talk to you about is the police department's spending rate. This chart is similar to last year's chart. And the reason I show it to you is because the police department is the largest department. Its budget for the year is about $3.6 million. And because of the, because last year's staffing was low, there was a tremendous amount of overtime that was incurred last year to make up that difference. At the time that the fiscal year-end 2016 budget was drafted, we did not know whether those positions were going to be filled or not. So the overtime was calculated into the budget at the higher rate. Now, the effect of that is, is that if you look at the police department budget on a monthly basis, they ought to spend about $300,000 a month. To December 31st of 2015, they were spending about $270,000 a month. That's about a 30, almost a $30,000 a month difference. So for the first half of the year, they underspent their budget by about $175,000. If they continue to underspend their budget at that rate, then at the end of the year, they will have underspent their budget by about $350,000. The reason that's important is that's money that hasn't been spent. So what does all that, oops, sorry, in the wrong way. So what does all that add up to? All right. Well, if we go through this, your unbudgeted and received revenues was 95,900, $95,900. The revenue watch was about 77,500 to the positive. And if we look at the estimated unspent funds for the PD, that's about $350,992. So in theory, the budget will be underspent by, underspent in improved revenues by about I just went through a series of five items. I would spend about $264,000 of that amount, which leaves us $258,000, which is net unallocated funds. All right. Now, so notice I say allocate to reserve estimate. What I did in this budget is, as I looked, as I looked at the budget over the past couple of years, it became painfully obvious to me that the way that the city goes about funding equipment purchases is on a very ad hoc basis, which when you're trying to make up a budget just causes me to pull my hair out, and I haven't got that much left to pull out. So what I did was I started to sit, and I sat down with Tim, I sat down with Doug, and I did some calculations, was I started to figure out what we would need to set aside on an annual basis to be able to acquire the equipment that we need on a consistent basis without creating havoc with the budget. So the council has set up a number of reserves that it would like to have. Now, over the, now, over the past couple of years, we have been funding what they call the revenue reserve. A lot of times it's called the reserve for economic uncertainty. All right? And you'll be happy to know that with the audit finished for last year and the $50,000 additions that I planned to put into it this year, which was in the budget, we will have at the end of this year a $307,000 balance in the reserve for economic uncertainty. You all were hoping to get to 5%. Well, that's 6.77%. So yeah, that's, that certainly is something that needs to be done. All right. Well, so I started looking at, well, you know, what else can we do to try and stabilize the financial situation of the city? And I started looking at replacing, at the equipment replacement reserve because that's another one that was set up. Now, I just want to go through the other four down there. You'll notice that they're in light gray. What I just want to tell you is the other four, like the employee benefit reserve. What that is, is that that's a fund set up to if all the employees left tomorrow, what would we have to pay out in terms of accrued vacation, sick pay, and all that sort of stuff? Well, we do that calculation every month. So right now, that balance would be about $600,000. Okay? We don't have any of that reserved, but I also don't think that all 50 of us are walking out tomorrow. So I'm, you know, I'm not as concerned about that number. We handle it on a pay-as-you-go basis. Well, I hope we're not. We handle it on a pay-as-you-go basis. And in terms of, you know, what reserves to kind of start funding, that one isn't as critical, I think, as the equipment reserve. The capital improvement reserve, haven't even done some analysis on what should go into that. Our litigation reserve, it should be $150,000 plus. We're handling that on a pay-go basis. And again, I could put money into that, but I want to get the equipment issue kind of dealt with because it's really kind of a bigger number over time, and it'll become clear in a minute. And then the community fund reserve, we'll have to sit down with the council and figure out what it is that you all want to put into that. So those are the designated reserve funds. My recommendation is to put $212,000 is the annual allocation to cover the PD equipment expense. Oops, wrong again. So I know, I'm going to get the eye strain with this one. What I did here, and you have it, it's for those of you out there, it's the last page of the, where I put it on full size. What I did here was I sat down with Tim and a couple of sergeants in the police department and tried to estimate what the major cost would be, equipment cost would be over a 10-year time period. So you have basically 22 police vehicles, and that's the most expensive part of those. You've got tasers, you've got body cams, you've got communication panels, which I'll talk, panels, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then you've got the computers, and you keep in mind, last year, we replaced most all of the computers for the PD. All right? So I go through and do that calculation over a 10-year time period to kind of figure out what's an average amount that ought to go into the reserves each year to cover the spending. So for the police department, it works out to about $212,600 per year. Now you're going, oh, that's a big number. Actually, that's maybe 5%, a little over 5% of the police budget, which isn't all that much. But when you're trying to do those big numbers in the space of one year, it does tend to be fairly disruptive to the bargaining process. So let me talk about PD communications for a second. One of the critical issues that the PD is facing right now, which is why I bring this up, they have two communications panels. And the communication panel is the interface between the people who call in and the communication with the officers out in the field. One of those panels is dead, isn't going to work. So they're using one panel right now, and that panel is, how old, Tim?
At least 20 years old.
At least 20 years old. I suspect it's way beyond its useful life. The issue is if that panel fails, the PD is screwed. All right? Because they're not going to have the ability to realistically communicate between the public and the officers. And there are other things that the panel does. Now, originally, the thought was the panels were going to be, you know, well over $100,000. But the lieutenant and his sergeants have done the investigation. It turns out that they can replace the panels for about $47,000. And it will be a fairly significant upgrade. So if you don't do anything else, you want to make sure out of the reserve that we replace those panels because the consequence of the failure is extremely serious. Okay. Leaving the PD department for a bit, I went to Public Works because that's what...
But to create a public panic, you have contingencies in place to overcome those problems should they, should they break, what we need to know about this?
Yes.
Cops are good about contingencies.
We do, we do have contingencies.
Thank you. No, I didn't mean, this is implied as a little...
We have a lot of tatters in public out there.
But your probability of approval, if you thought the rule was going to end, would be heightened.
You make sure the sky's not actually cold.
So he wanted to make us think that the sky was cold.
No, no, it really wasn't going to end. Okay. So, so leaving the policeman, police department aside for a second, I then went to Public Works. And Public Works is the next department that tends to have fairly expensive communicate, excuse me, equipment requirements over the years. And so Doug and I went through and tried to do an estimate of what he thinks he would need over the next 10 years and reasonable replacement period for those, and made up that, that next chart. And it looks like that, that number, excuse me, I forgot what the number was, that that number's going to be like $65,000 a year. So just trying to, just trying to give you an idea of what the Public Works equipment requests would be. What Public Works would like to do this year from the reserve, you know, I'll talk about this when it's coming from the second, is they need to get a couple of trucks and a utility dump trailer. The trucks, you know, moving people around is fairly important. The trucks we have are fairly old and also keep in mind, we have a bunch of temporary workers, and simply moving people around is getting to be an issue. So it's probably an appropriate time to acquire a couple of, couple of pickup trucks for Public Works. The utility dump trailer, this is a cost of $10,000. The reason that's important is because we have a big mower that mows all the grass in the park. Well, that mower gets moved around on the trailer right now, which is, don't listen to him, which is not legal to be driven on the street, so clearly. Now, I think they're looking in the other direction, or they're maybe skulking around in the middle of the night moving the mower, but we really need to have a trailer that is street legal to move the mower.
Is there a reason why what we have can't be main street legal? I mean, if it's comparable and it's movable, is there a reason why it's not licensed?
It was made by Tommy Blot. It's just pieced together. I don't think I can get past.
Sounds like we need a trailer. I guess you just make your time.
Now, now, the funds to pay for those, that's a total of like $70,000. The funds to pay for those will come from the road, road tax funds, the balance in the road account. The balance in that account is about $580,000. So why do we have $580,000 in the road account? That's a perfectly reasonable question. When you do road projects, they are fairly short time period, but very high dollar items to do. So what Doug is forced to do is to accumulate money from year to year to make sure that he can fund a particular road project. So just because there's $580,000, one project can wipe that out plus some in one year. So don't let the fact that there's $580,000, actually a little bit less, I think, in that account right now fool you because there are projects that are coming that will get done as soon as enough money is allocated. The other thing we need to realize about the road funds is a lot of those funds come from the highway users' tax, gas tax. Gas tax has gone down. If you remember last year's budget, mid-year budget review, I indicated to you that we estimated that the Buddha taxes for this year would be $100,000 less than they were last year. And that's in back half. So that's why we need to make sure we accumulate funds in that account. Okay. But we do have the money to cover the cost of those. All right. So going back to the estimated annual equipment reserve requirements. If you put all of those together, and the administration's $5,000, that's basically replacing computers. And code enforcement is a combination of computers and some vehicles estimated over a 10-year time period. All of that equipment totals up, if you do it on a pro-rata basis over a 10-year time period, it works out to about $293,000 a year. So what I'm proposing is, right now, is let's take, of those funds that are available, take $212,000 of that, put it into the equipment reserve. We will spend some of that this year in terms of two police vehicles, some of the tasers, and I think there was some of the communications panel. We wouldn't spend all of that, $212,000, we'd spend about $146,000. I would leave $63,000 to carry over to next year to contribute towards, next year, its equipment reserve. That's pushing it, but I think that it's something that the city council really needs to seriously consider getting behind. The benefit is we can plan out the expenditures. We know when they're coming. If we have to do some short-term borrowing to cover that, we can plan for that and not do it really nearly. And it's just a good habit to get into because then we don't have to worry about those equipment purchases in the future. So my recommendation is, oops, my recommendation is, is to, let me go back to that chart, is take of the $258,000 of unallocated funds, 212 of that allocated to the reserve estimate. Some of that money won't be spent. That's in the resolution, that's... That's in the resolution that's before you, which would still leave $45,000, almost $46,000 unallocated. That's enough cushion to allow for the natural fluctuations for the rest of the year. So, my ask of you is, I have a resolution here for you, which is 2016-08, which has authorized the budget adjustments that are basically discontably indicated. And I'm having to answer the questions. I just want to go over to...
Okay. Definitely no public works vehicles. Thank you for putting that in there and finally getting that signed because they're driving around. And even today, as I said, they were driving around in their own vehicles. I'm uncomfortable with that. So, when would we get these vehicles? Thing with the PD, when? Are they on order? I mean, are we going to be ordering them now or...
Currently, I'm looking right now. I'm looking at different...
$30,000 per vehicle just for some reason doesn't seem like that's going to be enough. That's what I worry about.
It's going to be close.
Yeah. Because prices on the trucks are pretty high. Because I've been looking at them.
We go to the government, get assistance, and we get discounts. And right now, they're going... They're issuing new discounts right now as we speak. So, I'm waiting to see what those discounts are. You're right. We might be short. Might be close.
That's an equipped truck with radios or you have to put those in?
That's a truck with light bars and radios.
I'm just telling you that that might not be enough. And I may have to come back again to... I mean, is that what would happen? We'd have to come back and say it was more than what we planned? And so, we're going to have to reallocate more? Wouldn't it be easier to allocate more, a little bit more, another $10,000 or something now? And then, so, we would have to come back? I just don't think that's going to be enough.
Well, we're still coming back to you for the award of the contract.
So, at that time, you'd have to... You would also put in there too, if this wasn't enough money to allocate? Okay.
What we're asking is just to adjust the budget right now. But we still have to go through the...
I always like to just adjust it once. And at the end of the year, we have more underball funds.
Well, not opposed to that. I mean, you're probably right. It's been a long time since I bought a truck with the staff. In fact, I've never bought a passenger truck with staff at all. So, realistically, I'd probably write maybe another $10,000. I don't know if it's $10,000 each or $10,000 of the load. I don't know those numbers yet.
I think even with the discount, it's going to be close to 30,000 to 36,000 per vehicle. I think even with discounts, the trucks are expensive.
Well, one thing I got to watch out for, and I guess sometimes it can be a little more tuneful. But like the one thing that Chris pointed out there, I've really got to watch the HUDA and all the revenues we have. And right now, we're spinning our S-Regional Safety Transportation funds, maybe about $177,000 a year. You know, I'm using that for personnel costs right now. That money should be used for projects. So, I got to be very careful. You know, this $500,000 is nothing. And that, I know you can cover personnel costs. If we were to take something catastrophic happen, we need to be in a place where we can cover costs to get us through the next fiscal year. So, at first, I was going to do this. And then Chris, you know, and Blot's here will say, you need to start looking at doing this.
You can't do your job if you don't have the equipment to do the job. So, I mean, one versus the other, I understand what you're saying. But if, from what I've seen with Public Works, you're not... You don't have the transportation to take them around, give them to the job that needs to be done, to haul the equipment that needs to be hauled. So, if you don't have the vehicles, you don't... I mean, the personnel aren't... You need to dispose of what they need to get anyway. So, my concern is...
The last few vehicles we have, last one we bought new was in 2002.
Right.
That's our crew cab. The other vehicles, we see them driving. Our surplus vehicles that I've bought in the county, PGEs, a lot of them were given to us.
And they're falling apart.
Well, I'm tired of spending money on...
Maintenance.
The thing is, yeah, the maintenance starts overcoming the cost of what the vehicle is worth. So, I personally just think that we should have more money in that section. And I don't think it's going to be enough. And I just think you have to come back and just not be able to buy the vehicles here at that point when I know that this is something that they need. I mean, it's up to you. You guys, you know...
Well, I'm in agreement with you right now. I'm going to ask that we move to add additional $10,000 per vehicle. And hopefully...
That would bring it to...
That's for Public Works.
Now, we don't come back and it's just...
That'll be $40,000 per vehicle.
If at the end of the year, we have to... We just, you know, adjusted at the end of the year. So, I'm going to do that now. That's my feelings.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? Put it out to the public. Any comment from the public? Seeing anyone rushing to the podium?
Awesome presentation.
Bring it back. Yes, thank you, Mr. McDonald. I appreciate that. Mr. Sabatier?
I know we started earlier with the whole presentation of everything that we've done and accomplished. And I want to say thank you to our finance director, Chris Beck. Now, this is forward, looking into the future of what we are going to need, not tomorrow, but in the next 10, 15 years. And that's... That makes me feel more comfortable to know that we're able to do this, that we're actually taking these steps today. As far as the $10,000, I'm not against it at all of adding $10,000 for each vehicle. But since we have to come back and approve of the spending, can't that reallocation and spending be approved simultaneously?
Another adjustment.
So, I almost prefer leaving our options open and reallocating and adjusting at the same time rather than allocating to something specific right now and just kind of leaving our options open in case something else comes to us.
I think that the money there is just really best to allocate now on the budget. And it's really best to have the money there, even if it's over, because he's not going to use this money by the end of the year. That's not going to go anywhere. It'll just be put back at the end of the year. It would just be reallocated back for the next year's budget. It's best that he knows that he has the money. Otherwise, he's going to be sitting here fumbling around trying to find something under 30 grand that he may not be able to find and wasting time. So, we giving that extra $10,000. It's not that much longer before we're doing the fiscal year again, you know, for next year. So, we're almost at the end of where we're going to be working on it again. So, if he doesn't have to spend it, it's going to be much easier to just start at our new fiscal, and it'll be there. So, I think it's best to do it now while we're doing the adjustments on the budget. The less adjustments you do, the better off you are. I mean, come back and keep doing the adjustments gets very confusing. If you just do it now, it's clear cut. So, it's just clear cut for him to be able to go on and do what he needs to do. So, I think we need to do it now.
Thank you. A question for the Public Works Director. Do you have any kind of a timeframe when you might need to make that bid or get your bid sheet in for those government vehicles?
I'm looking for the quotes. I'm waiting for the quotes now.
So, it's timely right now?
We started looking in November. Remember, we're trying to see if there was anything out there that probably was that the trucks that I'm looking for, there wasn't any. So, I had to jump in. And now, I'm looking at 2016 vehicles.
Good.
I've been searching for 2015 vehicles through the government sales dealerships we deal with. The vehicles don't have them. You know, so that's why I'm looking for 2016s right now.
Okay. Well, my concern, I'm going to pretty much echo what Councilmember Overton said. If he needs to get into contract to get that vehicle, I don't know. I would hate to miss a good opportunity. And that would be my concern. Anyone else? Comments? No comments? Do we have a motion?
Well, I'd just like to say, before we move on, I appreciate that this document and this process gets easier every year for us untrained laypersons in the County Finance Bureau. It also... Maybe because... Also, in addition to being easier to read, every year, our fiscal situation here in the city of Clearlight is improving. And I appreciate that kind of focus, that kind of forward thinking to be able to put us in a situation to make macro... Did you call it? I like that word. Macro decisions instead of making small micro decisions and putting out fires, as it were.
We're more prepared.
Yeah. And we're looking to the future so that we can make larger scale decisions. There is a place in here where... Oh, on community development, we're spending $102,000 on contract services. If that were projected to continue, that would be something to look at. Do we want to bring on a staff person that is in-house? I understand that it's not projected to continue at that rate or at that level at this point. But if it were... So, this document creates a situation where we can start to strategize. What's best for us? How are we best spending our money and getting the most bang for our buck? Great job.
Would you like to motion?
I would.
I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 201608, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearlight adopting the City of Clearlight mid-year budget and adjustments to the fiscal year 2016.
Second. With your increase?
With the increase in adjustments, as I stated.
Second. A motion and second. And Chris, would you offer a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lustelow?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Perna?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's awesome. You picked that awesome list.
I don't really have any reports coming up. But I would like to ask for some consensus. And I've been going out and meeting with some of the community folks. And I'm asking them to raise that bar. And I would like just kind of a request that we all, as we're going out and meeting with people, raise our own bar, you know, suit and tie for me. We have council meetings, you know, looking as good as we could and professional as our staff members are. And I want to applaud you both. So, I think we need to do that ourselves. I'm just asking for your help in that.
Is it any close to...
Thank you very much. That's what I do.
I think you have to change, but as I said...
I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it. But I just, as we're asking everybody else to raise the bar, I think we need to do the same ourselves. With that, I'd like to return to meeting. Thanks for everybody coming.